Okay. Call this regular meeting of Grand Forks City Council to order. And the first item is the adoption of the agenda for January the 14th. A motion to adopt the agenda. Councilor Studley, Second Councilor Krog, all those in favor? And the minutes of the December 10th, 2018 regular meeting minutes. Motion to adopt. Councilor, it's been such a long council. It's Councilor Corlick. We had a long day, guys, so we missed up a few words here. Second, Councilor Thompson. All those in favor? And we're down to the registered petitions and delegations, and we're ready to hear the new facade signage and look at the development engineering and planning on that. We've had this in front of us before. And is someone speaking to this, or we're just going to deal with it? It looks like we're just going to deal with it, council. Any comments? We can put that motion on the floor.
Please.
I'll move ahead with questions.
Councilor Zalinski makes the motion, seconded by Councilor Thompson. And questions on this? Go ahead.
Requirement for an MOTI permit? You know, being so close to the highway.
Was that a question? Does it need a special application?
I just see the one drawing that says pylon. Yep. And it's showing it outside the fence line. So I'm just wondering if an MOTI transportation permit needs some...
Or was needed?
Or was needed.
Get that on. Planning?
It's part of the process to send development permit applications for referral to this or transportation. If they have any comments on it. But we checked it against their standards. As far as we know, it's all good.
Okay.
Sorry, just to follow up on that as well. That particular sign is just replacing an existing sign. So my understanding is that it's not substantially changing the existing sign, so it shouldn't be an issue.
Thank you for the leeway on that. All right. So on the floor, any further comments or discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? And we had an in-camera meeting with B.C. Housing on the telephone, and they have basically been unable to attend. This is item B. Difficulties flying in and getting out of Casa Bar. And Councilor Thompson will summarize a few points of discussion that might clarify things. And if the other councillors want to chime in with something, go right ahead. Just to clarify what was basically told to us today. Councilor Thompson?
Yes, thank you, Your Worship. The Downtown Business Association sent me a number of questions, which I posed as many as I could to Armin. I'm really old. And I will report more on that to the DVA tomorrow when they have their lengthy meeting. But in essence, I had some other questions that I wanted to know. And because as you are aware, the development variance permit for parking costs and concerns. And so council wanted some clarification on some of the issues that were being included in that. The supportive housing is intended to be 34 one-bedroom units. It will accommodate both the handicapped and the challenged with mobility issues and some seniors that don't have vehicles or access, easy access to the downtown core. It will also accommodate people who have addictions with alcohol and or drugs. But they will all be effort. They're going to be staffed 24/7. They will provide meals for residents only, so it is not going to be a soup kitchen. And it will not be accessible to the public. Now, they want to award the contract at the end of the month, and they want to begin construction within the next six weeks. One of the things that they said with the current projects, it would only require 11 parking spaces for their staff. And their goal is to do this development in partnership with the community. Now, Armin said that she apologized that they weren't able to be at the meeting today, but she is prepared to come back to Grand Forks to meet with council and the community and address the concerns that council have. We don't have a date for that. We haven't established that yet. But the issue that's coming before council tonight for a decision is to allow our management staff to proceed with the process, which is to go and ask for comments from the impacted area. And I don't see Dee Dee here, so she can't answer that particular question for me. But that will be an opportunity for that feedback to come to council for their consideration before any firm and final decision is made.
Thank you. Any further comments from other councillors which to make on this topic? Nothing? Okay. Thank you very much. And we will accept the information as presented, a motion to accept the report. And carry. Councilor Corlick? Councilor Zalinski? All those in favor? Unfinished business? We have none. Written reports by council? I think we had three written reports, and I'll ask for any comments on written reports or any other comments from council in this version. Councillors that submitted reports, do you wish to comment on? Councilor Mosland?
Yes, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. Sorry. Oh. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, councillor. Boy, too many buttons. I just want to reiterate, part of my report, we have to write these reports, public should probably know, and hand them in pretty much a week before a council meeting. So we have to kind of anticipate what might happen. Anyhow, my report, I do want to congratulate our staff. I do want the tackling of the South Ruckel Riverbank Armory. This is a very complicated project. Their timelines are short, but with every day, I'm growing more confident that we're actually going to get it done before spring fresh up. Also, plans for fresh up response are proceeding, and within the next few weeks, I expect much more to become available for the public and for the public to participate. Staff and the Boundary Flood Recovery Team are also working on that. The third issue, though, is one that's been on our minds for quite some time, and that is the housing. And we had an interview with B.C. Housing staff, and, you know, the questions I posed in my report were answered, were asked, and were answered. They don't have any specific data from our community. They have lots of data from communities relatively our size, and of course, they have province-wide They do not see any need to get a count in Grand Forks area first, and this is not going to help it. They are not open to alternate locations. Their timeline, as Councilor Thompson has just said, is pretty much set. Well, you know, what has gone wrong in the past seven years? Well, I think what's happened, gone wrong, has probably happened in the last few months with their initiation, their initiative here and their seemingly indifference to community concern. However, we have to remember that we have worked in the past with B.C. Housing, and the previous council has got that transition housing in place, and previous projects in our community have gone forward. They do have a substantive operating budget for both the supportive housing project and the 19th Street family housing project. So there will be additional services in our community for those projects. They are quite willing to participate, you know, with council, but it seems to be on their terms at this point. I am hopeful that we can proceed with the public consultation in the weeks ahead about the parking variance, but also that the public will get an opportunity to voice their concerns directly to B.C. Housing. I hope that this process is not going to be too acrimonious, and that somehow we can convince B.C. Housing that if they are really going to get bang for the provincial taxpayers' buck, they are going to need our community on side. I'm certainly looking forward to working with my fellow councillors to make that happen. Anyhow, thank you, Mayor.
And further on council reports? Any comments? Hearing none, can I have a motion to accept the council reports? Councilor Thompson, Councilor Studley, all those in favor? Moving us to the verbal report from the RDK representative, which is me. A couple of catch-ups. The removal of rock wool from the landfill is not going to happen. It was looked at, and basically, Rockwool has turned that down. They're not going to go ahead with that anymore. Our concern was expressed, but the deciding factor was it was going to cost them too much money to remove it because it was a valuable product to the landfill. That's been resolved. We talked today about the pool flooring. Rowley was here, Director Russell. So we did cover a number of these things this morning in committee as a whole. Trail master plan is proceeding. There's been some budget increases, not affecting our bottom line, but that is proceeding. Transit sponsorship is in front of us at this point. There was no decision at the regional level, but we need to work with the regional directors on that. The options are that the city run it, that some other nonprofit run it, or that, you know, we avoid the off-the-side-of-a-death kind of approach. So we could give this some thought, but it's certainly going to be an issue. I think they run out at the end of March, the sponsorship by the hospital of the transit service. So we need to get on that because I think all of us made an issue of that being important for our community. The watershed management that was approved by referendum is falling into place, and there will be funds from the city that go into supporting that initiative. They are currently looking at staffing and structure and how that was going to work. That's about it. I just, again, the last time I was saying that you have the RDKB reports in front of you, but in fact, you really don't. You don't get the agenda until, or the minutes until after they're approved. So you're at least a month behind on it. So I'm sorry, that's not a source of information, but if you have any other regional district questions, I'll answer them now. No? Just talked right out. Motion to accept my report verbally. Councilor Thompson, Councilor Corlick, all those in favor? All right. We're moving down to recommendations from staff for decisions. The fuel tank replacement budget amendment. We've read that particular issue that they've run into with old fuel tanks, and council is being asked to approve an additional $50,000 in advance of the fuel tank replacement capital project. So that's the motion. And can I have a motion on the floor for that? Councilor Thompson, and the seconder being Councilor Corlick, and open to questions?
Yes, Your Worship. Through you to the manager of operations. The additional funding, now, is that for 2019 budget? Or has that been paid out, and you're asking for an amendment to the 2018 budget? Just for clarification, please.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. That's for 2019. No money's been spent, but it's been identified as an issue, and we're just looking to take care of it.
That's it. The city works yard. Councilor Zalinski?
I'd like to make this suggestion that we push this forward to the budget deliberations and talk about it.
That we not approve that at this point?
That we refer to the budget conversation.
Okay. Well, we don't have a motion of deferral on this at this point, but we have a motion on the floor. Councilor Thompson?
Is, my mouth is a little... Is this an early budget approval request? Do you get this done now?
Yes, it was. The project was slated for the fall. It got pushed back to later fall. We did find a leak that wasn't determined, the extent of the leak, because it wasn't known the duration of the time that the elbow was leaking. It wasn't the tank itself. So we're just trying to find the scope. So it would be the drilling and all of that. So we're trying to get that done and the fuel tanks back in operations, because currently the fire department and the public works, and everybody is fueling up across town at the card locks.
Okay. So there's immediacy to this and the Councilor Zalinski's concerns. Do you want to comment?
Yes. So you've been without fuel tanks, sorry, through the manager of operations. You've been without fuel tanks for how long?
I want to say two months now.
Okay. So I don't see the immediate nature. We're going to be talking budget in a few weeks' time, so comment.
But not approving budgets for at least two months.
But at least we know what the budget is.
Okay. The motion is on the floor. Further comments on this? This is going to be a vote decision from the local council. Further to this, Councilor Thompson?
Well, I would just like to amend that motion to indicate that this is early budget approval for the 2019 budget, and I don't think it's clarified in that motion.
Okay. Is there some issue with that being clarified further?
I think it's fine to put that in. It is an early budget approval if you want it before the budget's approved, so there's nothing wrong with adding that piece in there if that's what council wishes.
Okay. And the seconder, Councilor Corlick, are you agreeable to putting that in? And Councilor Zalinski?
Another small amendment then, Mayor, is where's the money actually coming from? So I saw capital in there someplace. So is it, what capital reserve is it coming from?
I can't answer that. I wonder if a capital reserve account, do we need to identify it, or is it coming from capital reserve?
What happens with capital reserve?
Yeah. It has to come from capital reserve.
Which one, I guess?
The general capital reserve.
Officially, there's only one, I believe, there's only one general account that has all the funds in it. We have...
Right. So general capital reserve. General capital reserve account.
Yeah, just so that we clarify, we know where the money's coming from.
Okay. So it is clarified. Do you need to add it to the motion, or no?
Past practices I have, but...
Fifty thousand if it is resolved.
Okay. We're having another amendment here then. So do you want to state what amendments would be then?
Resolve that council approve the early budget approval in the amount of $50,000 to fund the fuel tank replacement capital project. The money's to be appropriated from the capital reserve fund.
Councilor Corlick? That's the motion on the table. Any further discussion on that? Councilor Mosland?
So, Mayor, are we on the main motion?
We're on the main motion. We adapted it.
It was a friendly amendment. The only thing I wanted to ask, Mayor, is this is supposed to be an example of best practices about underground fuel tanks. I'm wondering if there is an inventory available of other underground fuel tanks, especially in residential areas.
So you are way off the topic here, but...
No, in a sense, I am. I'm just, the concern is contamination from underground fuel tanks.
Could we ask for some information on that?
Is there? No.
Planning? Door Lawrence?
We don't, because most of them are on private property, and the knowledge of those tanks, for the most part, is the citizens of all the homes. And contaminated site B.C. is about the only place that we can look at to see. They have better records than we do. We would have to try and contact the original oil companies and go through a process. It's something we can do, but it is very time-consuming and it's fairly costly, so if that's something that council did choose to want to move forward with, could you?
Okay. So we'll not complicate this motion, but if you want to make a separate motion on that, Councilor Mosland, you can.
Not at this time, Mayor.
Okay. And the question on the floor, ready for the vote? Councilor Krog has a comment?
Yeah. So the fuel tanks, oh, through you, two behind me. The fuel tanks were pulled from the ground, and this money is assessing the ground? Am I correct in that?
No, I think this is to remove the tanks. Again, Mr. Reed could comment on this.
So we had it in the capital budget to remove the tanks a couple of years ago.
Yeah.
And then the fuel tanks and the fuel system shutdowns. We had to replace the pumps and the software and the delivery of the fuel. We put it back in. We put, I believe it was $50,000 in to remove the tanks from the ground. We have removed the tanks from the ground. So they are cleaned and have been recycled.
Certified.
Yeah. So this is to drill test holes to find the scope of contamination. So it's not guaranteed that it's, we're going to need the $50,000, but we have to see if it's contained within the property. As mentioned in the report, it is for best practice, because we are the governing body that decides how the reclamation is done within the city, so...
Clarify that for him?
Yeah. Yeah. That was just...
Okay. So the motion on the floor is to approve this funding from the general capital budget and recognizing that it is a preliminary to the regular budget. What's the wording on that?
Early budget approval.
Early budget approval. All those in favor? Opposed? Carry. The fire season deployment question, that a council approves a surplus of $10,100 to be applied to volunteer training facility that work constructing a storage shed for pallets. That's one motion. And I'm assuming that that would just address this year's $10,100 that the fire department made on work they did outside of the city. And so can I ask for a motion to approve that? Councilor Thompson?
And I'd like to...
Well, we do have another motion here, so you could have a separate motion to that. This is simply for this one. Councilor Krog seconds it? Are you asking a question?
Yes.
You're not seconding the motion?
Oh, I am seconding it. I thought I did.
And then you can ask a question.
Yes, that's where I am.
To him.
So it's storing pallets, which I assume they're used in fire training. Wouldn't that be better to spend the money on like a cappuccino machine or something else for the volunteers? Just saying.
That's a second motion.
Oh, that's a second motion.
All right. So this is this year's money that the fire department made doing outside work. They want to use it for this purpose. Ready for the question?
I know what I got. I have a question.
All right.
Probably to you, Dale. Training facility, do you have a total build-out in mind, or is it, we've got some money, let's do this, we've got some money, let's do that?
Yeah. Initially, we had some phases. We had three phases. We finished phase one, we're substantially completed phase two. That phase three will take some fundraising from volunteers and in combination with some of our deployments and extra stuff as well. But, and that'll come, it's a little less critical for us. We'll be down the road, but substantially, we've almost completed phase two.
Okay. Satisfied with that?
I'm just going to reiterate the, I think, a need for capital budget for the fire department for...
Which I think you can incorporate in our next motion. So the motion on the floor is for this use of $10,100 for this year. All those in favor? Carry. The second part of this then is what we do with this longer term. Do we want to make this a standing order that if they generate funds outside, they can use it for a training, fire training facility? Or do we want to give them a budget for that? Councilor Thompson?
Like, I will put a resolution on the floor for discussion, if I can get a second to it. And that is that council approve any net annual funds received from the Emergency Preparedness EOC that is based on the volunteers' time spent doing, we can change up the language here. It'd be set aside specifically for the use of the volunteers for training purposes. I wouldn't like to, okay, I need to second it before I can...
Okay. Councilor Corlick, second your motion?
The reason I bring this forward, and I'm with your indulgence, is the fire chief speak to it. I wouldn't want to see them limited. This isn't money that the taxpayers are paying. This is money that is generated by the volunteers that's coming back through the city, and it's not, it's not being, we're not taxing for it, but it's for the use of the volunteers. And I think, from my perspective, I would like to see the volunteers make a decision on how they would like to see the money generated from their time be spent. I would ask, with your indulgence, the fire chief speak to that.
Okay. And I'm looking at motion number two basically saying that any annual net funds be applied to and controlled by, without having to come to council, the development of a fire training facility.
But I don't want to limit it to the fire training.
Oh, I see. Okay. That it be just for training?
For whatever training they purpose they want me to do.
Can I give a brief?
Yeah.
So originally, when this happened, it first happened in 2015, and we had our deployment down at Rock Creek after we had surplus funds came back to, from that deployment. And one of the things at that time with the C.O., I had a discussion with him, and my, the couple, there's three things I want to make sure happen. One, it needs to benefit, the city needs to benefit, regional district, community boundary, and it needs to benefit the volunteers, because when we go on deployments, we use city equipment, we use RDKB equipment, and we use our volunteers. At that time, because we were just getting rolling in the fire training ground, and it was a somewhat significant amount that came back after expenses, it was really beneficial to get us off the ground with the fire training ground. Since then, we've completed, like I said, phase one and substantially phase two. We've got some small projects. It would be nice to be able to use this for other training as well. For the volunteers, there are things like training props and that kind of thing that are pretty costly, that instead of us going to the city and the taxpayers to do that, we could use these funds to benefit the volunteers in that way as well. And it would, by doing that, it's also benefiting both the city and the regional district.
And so I would think that that... And so I would think that that is in support of what Councilor Thompson is saying, to give you the flexibility there, training in general, volunteers in general?
Yes.
Okay. Councilor Zalinski?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, and I guess what I'm saying is that the service you and your volunteers provide to the community is too important to rely on a few extra dollars coming in now and then, that we should fund it accordingly. That whether it's training facility, whether it's equipment, whether it's fire trucks, we should have a capital fund set up to get the service to the people that need it and not rely on these extra monies that may or may not come in. That's my concern.
Okay, so you could introduce this during our budget planning over the next month? But the motion on the floor then is basically motion number two with the taking out of the specifics of training facilities, so to limit it to just training. But again, did you want to clarify anything in that motion?
I don't think it really, I don't think it really needs any further clarification because it's going to the volunteer, basically to the volunteers for, for them to decide what they want to do for training. If there's the capital purchases that they want to make for, for training, or if there's...
Whatever.
Yeah, I mean, if there was a specific facilitator for a particular subject that they wanted to bring in, that would be extraordinary. They would have the funding to do that, and they don't have to come to council and ask permission.
Okay, so the motion's...
They can do it on their own.
The motion's on the floor to give that flexibility on this particular thing, which is net funds. All those in favor? And the second suggestion from Councilor Zalinski is that we put this on the list of what we consider in our budget process to ensure that they're not dependent on those extra funds that we give them money for training that they need. Okay. Thank you very much. The next item of business is the Wild Safe B C program, which has been an effective program in our community. The contribution on this is a grant contribution plus 8,500 from our Wild Safe management budget to match the supplemental grant funding. A motion for this? Councilor Maslin, seconded by Councilor Krog. Is there some reluctance here, discussion? Yes.
Through all the budget stuff I've looked at, where am I going to find the wildlife management budget?
Yes, good question. Can you clarify where the wildlife management budget is? Is that an actual fund?
Yes, yes, there is a wildlife management budget, but I believe it's under environmental.
And is this, this was not used last year?
It wasn't used last year because we didn't make the cut. There's limited funds, B C Conservation Foundation has limited money. And so we didn't make the cut last year for, for the community. So this is a grant application, and they don't get their funding guaranteed until later in the year, so we won't actually know whether or not the funding is being provided and for another month or two.
Okay. All right, so that's the motion on the floor, that we support this. I think Councilor Zalinski's problem with this previously was that, again, it's out of the budget process and that we're being asked to approve a budget line here for something that we haven't planned for. However, the motion on the floor is that we go ahead with the grant application with the implication that it's 8,500 of our D A C money. All those in favor? Opposed? Carry. The proposed dental clinic, 1899 68th Avenue Development Engineering and Planning. So we're being asked at this point to approve a development permit application. Councilor Krog makes a motion, seconded by Councilor Zalinski. Discussion on this? It's been before as before. No questions? All those in favor? Carry. The emergency overtime, E O C overtime. Do we need a presentation on this by anyone? It's pretty straightforward. It's giving us the ability to pay management staff for the overtime at the same level that it's paid at the regional district, for the same rules, not necessarily the same money.
Next, Councilor Thompson?
Councilor Thompson, it's seconded. Councilor Korlick? Discussion? Councilor Zalinski?
Yeah, just one quick question. All these monies are billed back to the province, right?
Right, that would be E O C. Councilor Thompson?
Just to comment that for the time and the hours that our staff has spent, it would be commended, and I think this is just a small recognition of that.
Absolutely.
And well deserved.
Okay. No more questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Carry. Economic recovery initiative, this is the biggie on this list here of all of these things that are in front of us in terms of what we can do. But a lot of this, I think, is that we need to give the go ahead to start looking at some of this from our staff side in terms of grants and planning. So what we've got in front of us seems rather enormous, but in fact, basically what we're moving forward here is that we start to look more seriously at some of these initiatives. I have a motion to get motion number one on the floor. Councilor Korlick? Councilor Thompson? You guys work as a team or something?
Yeah, we do. We need before the meeting to say.
Absolutely. Okay, discussion on this. I know this is, this is a big one, but again, this is not decision making as much as pushing it forward in terms of planning, grants, and various other kinds of initiatives that need to be taken. Councilor Maslin?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I, so is this the time and place where we start talking about those different priorities? I mean, I find that I can support some of them, but others I'm more reluctant to support. And also, I, it does sort of go hand in glove with what Councilor Zalinski has been saying about putting the cart before the horse. These significant amount of funds we're talking about. And perhaps we should be trying to incorporate some of this, these initiatives and wishes into our budget discussions to see how they would actually... I know, I know in the presentation that was put before us in that long brief, part of the struggle is trying to find the funding. And where are we going to take funding from here? Are we going to take funding from there? You know, I, this is going to take a lot more discussion, really. Some of this stuff I can support right away, but others, I, you know, I'm more reluctant, especially without seeing how we can cohesively and sensibly put it into an overall budget plan.
And I agree, and if you read the last two lines of that long motion, it says, "And further, all approved initiatives to be included in the 2019-23 financial plan." So this is moving these items through to discussion as part of the budget.
Is that the way you read it?
Yes. You read it differently.
Well, when I, when I read it, included in the financial statement for financial plan, that's a done deal. That's all I can say.
Okay, can I clarify that? From C A O?
Yeah, so your worship, I think that there's some of these that could very well be through the approval of the financial plan. That's part of the intent. There are a couple of pieces that should council have the flavor for. One, or a couple of these mostly is when we're looking at the fire flow protection works and loan authorization by law. If we wait until the financial plan is approved, we're likely miss the window to notify the regional district of our, we have to notify them when we're using our loan authorization by law. So if council has the flavor for building with that, we definitely need to have that one prior to that. The other piece there is the Sustainable Infrastructure Investment Plan. I know we're looking around about with a million dollars in there, but it also allows us to start looking towards and how that, it's more or less, in words, it's not like we're going to need a million dollars upfront. This is where we're looking at projects that we can do from an internal process. And so I think that those pieces there, you know, the money values are, are, like, it's not just a full million dollars that comes out. The other pieces, you know, just so council knows that any of these pieces, they have to wait until a financial plan is approved before we can move ahead. So that would mean any revitalization proceedings for the bylaws, anything like that would actually have to kind of wait because we're looking for the monies that would have to be done through our engineer of record. So there are, there are a few things in there that could stall some of the processes, just so council can bear.
Councilor Thompson?
Yes, I hear what Councilors Maslin and Zalinski are saying. And I think what may be causing them concern is that all approved initiatives. So if we removed the word approved and just said, "And further, all initiatives be included in the 2019-2023 financial plan," might be more palatable to them. And then, as you were saying, Diane, if there were specific initiatives that you wanted to bring forward that needed to be dealt with prior to, then we could deal with those separately in a different resolution. But who does it, two counselors, would that, would that allay some of your concerns with respect to this particular resolution?
Councilor Maslin?
You know, like, Counselor, I was saying that myself, like, how, I don't know. And I, to, and further, all initiatives to be included into 2019-2023 financial planning, so that we, so that we will, we will get a chance to put, to incorporate these into the financial plan as we discuss them, maybe add seratum or whatever. Anyhow, so I appreciate your attempt to, to solve my concerns, but maybe I'll pass it along to Councilor Zalinski. That's my comment. I would like to see these, we deal with them one at a time, that we, that if there are some really emergent ones, yeah, let's deal with them. Let's get them out of there, and let's, let's deal with those. But some of them really are going to take some careful thinking if they are actually going to get a B factor.
Okay, and I'm hearing from our C A O that there is at least one on that list. Would you identify that, if I'm correct? This is an emergent one that we need to...
Yes, your worship, thank you. The emergent one here, of course, is the one for the loan authorization by law and fire flow protection. And that works also in concert with the I C I P resolution down below. But we would need to have that one approved by council for sure in order for us to start the loan authorization process, because we have to notify through the regional district, and it's a very small window there. And the other one that I spoke about was the Sustainable Infrastructure Investment Plan, where, you know, if we were going to do any planning internally for any projects, that would be something that staff would likely try to get something off the ground likely by April of this year. And so we would pretty much almost like miss the planning window if we were going to try to do some internal capital works. I don't know if that's not some moron enough, but in order for us to do any planning that we would be able to do on ourself for some independent projects.
Okay, I'm having trouble separating out the issues on this motion. Councilor Zalinski?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to try a different crack at this. And I'll just talk off the top of my head that council approved in, in theory, or in principle, the economic recovery initiative presented and authorized staff to continue with grant applications, background work, so that expenditures can be confirmed during the budget process.
Period?
Yeah.
And can I have a second for that?
Is there a motion on the floor?
No.
No.
Is there? Did we put a motion for that whole one on the floor?
I thought you did.
Okay, I'm sorry, I lost track of that.
Okay.
Do you still want to vote on that whole motion? And then replace it with...
I will withdraw the motion.
And the seconders come from the floor? All right, so the floor is clear then?
Yep.
And Councilor Zalinski is making another motion, basically an in-principle move that would allow staff to go ahead with the recovery initiatives as presented, but not commit ourselves to the whole thing, but authorize them to proceed with the contingent issue?
Yes, any, any background, any applications for funding or anything else that they can do right now before we look at it at the end of the month?
In more detail? Is this going to work for you?
In principle, I guess so. I, I think that, I guess the one concern that I would have is that, you know, if we're going, like, I don't know how much work we'll be doing right off the bat, but, you know, I don't want to have staff do a whole bunch of work and then find out that council doesn't want to approve it at the end. So, and I'm talking about the two that I spoke about. The other ones are basically money pieces. Like I said, any of the ones that we show would be actual money funding, the airport master plan and the bylaws and stuff would, we would pretty much have to kind of put that on hold until council approve the budget.
Okay, and the fire flow one?
I think that as long as council is aware that we would be carrying forward with that loan authorization by law, then we could start on that, you know, comfort level.
Right.
I'm wondering...
Councilor Thompson?
If we rebound that motion again, and we took the two pieces with respect to the fire flow protection works and the Sustainable Infrastructure Investment Plan, took that out, and we voted on those two separately, or we put motions forward separately, that would then authorize our staff, and they know that we're going to, we would support that. Because I think including it all in this one particular resolution, it's too cumbersome.
Too cumbersome.
And I think it would be easier for the public and for, for our council, probably for our staff, if we separated them. And that would give them the comfort that they're proceeding with, with more confidence than they would if we just approved in principle.
Okay.
May I speak to that?
Yeah, I'm still stuck on this. I'm not sure how we're going to get around it and break out those two items. So if we approve it in principle and remove those items and then deal with them as a separate motion next?
Okay. So your worship, the suggestion is that if council wanted to break this up into two, if we have the same wording and just had from items four and five, I guess it is, so have the wording the way we have it to show as four and five, and balance one to three to be referred to the budgeting process.
Okay, one to three to be referred to the budgeting process, and four and five to be approved tonight and...
Yeah, as, as shown would be maybe a, and use your way to go about it.
That sounds reasonable. Councilor Zalinski?
Just to confirm the loan authorization by law, so you're just asking to move forward, but yet for 900,000, you'll still come back to council once everything, paperwork's in order?
So, so your worship on this one here, so when we were looking at the fire flow for the well, the initial project was for 900 K. So if we were going to be doing the loan authorization by law, like, it would show up in the budgeting as well as part of that loan authorization by law when this rule says the budgeting piece. But we still need that go ahead, so... piece. But we still need that goal ahead. So council will still look at it in the budgeting process, but if we're going to go ahead with the loan authorization by law, we would pretty much have to do it and get started on that. Now, having said that, is that it may not be 900K if we are successful in the ICIP grant that's down in the second resolution because part of the funding would have the ability to go in there for proof. So the only time the 900K would come to play is if that ICIP grant wasn't, the application wasn't successful.
Counselor Thompson?
If there isn't a loan authorization by law, doesn't mean?
We're not spending 900K.
No, you, you put the regional district on notice that you bought this available. When you want to get money, then you send it to the regional district and they have MFA land sort twice a year, I think. So you have to give it to the regional district in time to include it in their bylaw that goes to the MFA. I mean, it's a convoluted, complicated, difficult, sometimes to understand a process, but that's, that's the way it works. So by doing this, you're not saying, yeah, well, we're just going to go out and borrow 900,000 or a million dollars. It's just saying that you're, you're authorizing our staff to, to get prepared so that when we get into budget discussions and you want to look at this, that's the time that we can, we can do that. But it just gives them the comfort that it's, we're working towards this for them. Does that clear the mud or?
Doesn't help me. Okay, I've got to, we've got to bring this to some kind of conclusion here, suggesting we break out these two contingent items. Counselor Korlick?
I just, for myself, I think it's like having an operating or a credit line that you use if you need to.
Right.
And that would be it. That, that's how I see it. So, you know, it might be just a simplified look at things. You may not need that money, but you've got it there if you should. And so that authorization is simply there.
And you don't want to lose the opportunity?
That's right. So you need to get it in place for just in case.
Can I bring it back then to the fact that we could then approve this motion as written, knowing that it really doesn't commit us to anything more than proceeding on these items, but it's not a final decision on, on any of these items in particular? Right, on your petition? Close enough?
It's close, yeah.
What's the current resolution on the fourth?
There isn't one. You removed it and Counselor Zelinski was putting another one on for adoption in principle. I'd, I'd like to suggest that we go ahead and adopt a motion as been presented to us, knowing that there are safeguards here in terms of us going further along than we want to with the expenditures. Do you want to put your motion back on the floor?
Uh, yes, I will with the deletion of the word approved. And further all initiatives to be included in.
Which would mean then that we can cherry pick it a bit?
I'm thinking.
I'm sorry, ma'am counselor, I missed. Could you repeat that?
Oh, the, the motion would be as recommended, with the exclusion on, on the second to the last line of the resolution, take out the word approved. So that would read that and further all initiatives to be included in the 2019-2023 financial plan.
Okay.
Included or discussed?
Well.
Well, they, they can include it, and then we will be discussing with the financial plan.
Deciding on it or no. Right, okay. That seems like a reasonable motion. Seconder, Counselor Korlick. Further, all those in favor? And the second motion again, basically, is to go ahead with senior levels of government applying for opportunities in the infrastructure program. Can I have a motion for the motion number two? Counselor Korlick, Counselor Krog, discussion on this? This is, this is only authorization to seek these opportunities from senior levels of government. Counselor Maslin?
Yes, Your Worship, I am much more comfortable with this.
Yes.
I, I would just, please, if I was to counsel anything, to avoid complicated motions.
That's a big one.
You know, it, we just got bogged down terribly. I, I'll support this motion because basically it just authorizes staff to go apply, but not spend. So, yeah, I can, I can support that. But I still have trouble with pretty complicated motions there. For seven of us, it can get really, really complicated.
Yes. All right, the motion's on the floor that we approved this. Counselor Studley, you're voting?
I've got a motion.
Yes.
Seconded.
Did we get that motion on the floor?
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor. Carried. Thank you. That was painful.
You're good.
Yeah. These are easy ones.
Yeah, I'll call it for a snow pitch.
All right, we're down to information items?
No.
No, economic recovery initiatives?
The council directs staff to present.
Where do you have the other motions?
Two more motions on that.
Oh, I, I.
Oh, that's all right. Okay, because I'm like, no, just.
Yeah. Okay, the council directs staff to present options that freeze or partially freeze the 2019 tax and utility revenues during the financial plan and tax rate budgeting process. Motion? Counselor Krog? Counselor Thompson? Speaking to it?
Uh, yeah, just that it directs staff to present the options. It doesn't say it's zero, or it's freeze. Yeah, to present, let's explore it.
Okay. And you, who is this? Counselor Thompson with the second? Or did you want to comment on that?
No.
Motherhood issue, let's look at it and see if we can keep it as low as possible. All those in favor? Opposed, carried? And fourth, but not, the council directs staff to research suspension of the development cost charge by law for up to two years and to report back to council. Any options to assist in attracting new development? So this is again, research the suspension of our DCCs. Counselor Krog makes a motion?
Yeah.
And seconded by Counselor Korlick?
Yeah, just the same thing. It's to, to see if it's possible and what effect it would have.
Yeah, trying to.
And then we'll make the decision.
Okay, so we're going to look at those DCCs and see if there's something we can do there that will advantage us in attracting more business. Okay, all those in favor? Opposed, carried? Now, all right, the Grand Forks, slow, snow pitch tournament. Council approves a special occasions license. We do this all the time. Any problem with this? Can I get the motion? Counselor Thompson, Counselor Studley, all those in favor? Okay, what a waste of time. Let's, let's not do this anymore.
What?
Well, these regular events that come through like this don't need to come to us all the time. They can be decided internally and, and yet for many, many years, we, we feel it's our obligation to ensure that they're not out of control. It used to be a rule. It is not any longer. Counselor Korlick?
Yes, Your Worship. So that, that's the intent of staff is back in the day, we had to have these. The R C P wouldn't approve any liquor licenses unless we had it within the council. It's not so the case anymore. We can delegate that to staff. That would mean though, that if there was something like a very large event coming in, that it would come to council. But the, these type of ones, what happens is, is that, you know, like the ball tournament people and that, they don't really pay much attention to the agendas and all of a sudden they want to put something out and it's a real stressful situation trying to get it in in time. And so if we had the autonomy to be able to do that, it'd be a lot easier for, for them and for council that didn't have to, to make these smaller decisions.
Do you want to make that a motion now to transfer that responsibility for standard requests for liquor licensing in our park to a staff function?
So we have a bylaw in place currently that requires this process for council to make the exception. The deputy corporate officer and myself are going to look at a couple of other bylaws that may benefit from this, that have to do with events, so that we could possibly, council could potentially delegate some of the event processes that require council interaction otherwise to come straight to staff and we could handle it.
Okay, so we'll expect that in the future in terms of recommendations?
I'm hoping for March, March to be of the whole.
All right, sounds good. Okay, thank you very much. We did approve that. Down to bylaws. The, what you see in front of you is, is to basically direct staff to bring forward an amendment to the zoning by law that would remove the 100 meter separation distance between non-medical, well, between, you know, non-medical cannabis retail stores. It is a problem at this point. We have a number of people that are looking at retail operations here. It also is a problem that we have a 100 meter setback from the highway for signage. So I'd like to see us remove that as well and add that to the list of what we removed. On the other, on the other issue though, of the 100 meter setback within commercial and industrial land, it was suggested by the planning department that we not take that 100 meter setback out, that it would in fact give us an opportunity to look at what type of business was being proposed related to cannabis that would be going into commercial and industrial, and that it would offer us during a variance request process to decide whether that particular industry would be a problem to anyone surrounding the area or whatever reason, that we would still have the ability with that 100 meter setback to say, you know, it's not, doesn't fit there unless you stay 100 meters back from the, from the property line, which almost eliminates any kind of building in many cases with our available land. Can I get a comment from the planning department on this?
Cannabis retail.
This is, this is the cannabis retail license?
Uh, thank you, entertainer. So the bylaw was brought in before the province had finalized their process. So initially, what they thought they were going to do was the province was going to vet the applications. And actually, again. So the top line is the provincial process, the liquor and cannabis regulation board. So their process involves receiving applications. And then they told us initially that they were going to do a financial integrity assessment and security screening prior to sending us the referrals, which would have made our job a little easier because then they would have done their vetting and they would have rejected or approved applications and they would have sent us only approved applications. What they're actually doing is after an application is submitted, they're sending us that immediately. And then they're concurrently doing their financial integrity assessment, security screening concurrently. So it does trigger our, our process to start our review, which could be all for naught if they end up rejecting the application anyways. These applications to the province cost $7,500 to the applicant, $1,500 a year. They have to secure a location. So if they're leasing a location, they could be paying their lease on a commercial space. And we're estimating that these processes between the provincial process and our process could take anywhere from four to six months. So you could easily see these folks investing 10, 15, $20,000 into something before they even know whether or not they're going to be approved. So the, we have in our bylaw a 100 meter separation from community use zone, 100 meters from a use centered facility, and 50 meters from the highway. Those ones are all pretty, they're solid because that doesn't change. Community use is where community use is. Use centered facility might be a moving target if, you know, somebody decides to put a daycare right downtown or something like that. But I think the risk is fairly low on that. And the 50 meters from the highway are all, they're set. So if a business, a person wants to do their due diligence, they can look at our bylaws and say, yes, I meet all those requirements. I'm going to put an application in. I'm going to spend that $10,000 or $20,000. The moving target for them is that they can't be within 100 meters of another retail outlet. So by the time their process is complete, they might meet the requirements at the, at the beginning of the process. They've done their due diligence. They've checked. They meet all our bylaws. By the time their application is completed and goes through the process, they may not meet that requirement. So it does introduce quite a bit of uncertainty for the businesses. And it's a little bit unfair for them because if they can do their due diligence, but in the end, they may not be able to get their license anyways. So it is creating a bit of an issue for us. And like I said, the, the province, we didn't really know what their process was going to be. And so we brought the bylaw in prior to that. So we're looking to see if council would be interested in removing that requirement and opening for discussion.
Thank you. And can you comment on why the 50 meters from a controlled highway is there? Was there a rationale for that?
No. When we brought in these, the bylaw, what we had done was done research for other communities to see what they had done. And so we tried to come, you know, with something that was similar to what other communities had been doing. And we introduced it to council today as that and allowed them to make a decision about what they felt about that. I guess the rationale would be that they didn't want people driving through town and seeing signs, but the signage has to be quite minimal anyways, or council could, you know, we could bring in a sign by law to deal with any signage if there were any concerns about that.
Or any violation of highways rules on signage. So I, I see that as superfluous as well, that, that 50 meters from a highway. But again, it's not on our list, but I'd like to add it to what we look at in terms of changing that zoning by law. Counselor Thompson?
What is the government's requirement on, we have the 100 meters separation. What is the stat, um, standard in the provincial regulations?
You ready to say that?
The municipalities were to determine first whether or not they wanted them. And then it's up to the municipality to determine how many and where they go.
So that's not a provincial rule. The provincial rules are there. And again, that's in terms of, of access or closeness to childcare and other various kinds of areas where children might be gathering, primarily schools, hospitals. But they, the 50, you know, we're not limiting other businesses being visible from the highway. Why would we not encourage cannabis businesses to have signage that's visible from the highway? As long as, again, complies with our signage rules and complies with highway signage rules.
So that's not on here?
That's not on there, but I'd like to add it to the motion actually, that we look at removal of the, of the 50 meter setback from, of a, what do they call it, a controlled highway. Counselor Zelinski?
So just so I have it clear, all we're saying to staff is do these changes presented back to council and then we can discuss it?
Yeah, in a revision of the bylaw.
Thank you.
Can I ask that the, the motion be made then and include the 50 meter setbacks on the highway to the motion? Counselor Maslin?
That's a half a hand.
I know, because I have real reservations about that there. You don't see too many advertisements alongside a provincial highway, at least through the city. I know how very, how difficult it is, yet highways approval to put up any sign.
Yet it is.
You know, uh, you know, and I can't, I, I, I have a hard time. Yeah, go ahead, add that 50 meter separation, remove that 50 meter separation. I, yeah, go ahead, add that 50 meter separation, remove that 50 meter separation because it seems, it will still be up to the highways department, I believe.
And ask in terms of our own signage rules?
Yes.
Are you making that motion and adding that to the 100 meters?
Uh, this is just to go for the staff to go and come back.
Right.
Certainly, I'll add that.
And a secondary to that? Counselor Zelinski, further discussion again, this is to bring back a, a new bylaw that we can then debate further when it comes back to us. Understanding? All those in favor? Opposed, carried. We have no late items, questions from the public and media, we're opening up any questions from Alex? Alex, Kate?
I don't think I can hear you.
No. Anything further from the public? Anyone wish to say anything from the public? And a motion to adjourn? Counselor Thompson, Counselor Krog?